Good evening, everyone. Let me try that again. Good evening, everyone, and thank you. Wow, it's nice to have company. We'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Daly City Planning Commission meeting. It's a special meeting of Wednesday, November 6, 2019. And so let us stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. So we will now have the administration of oath of office to our new commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate it. I am honored to do the oath for Ms. Velva Vilanueva. Can you stand? So just repeat after me and raise your right hand. Say, "I..." Say your name.
I, Velba Vargas Vilanueva.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you have anything to your new commission, you have the floor.
Oh, I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to serve the community in the city of Daly City.
Can you tell us a little about yourself?
Oh, so I was born and raised in Daly City. I grew up in the Bay Shore neighborhood, and I went away, went to Westmore High School. I graduated from there in 1995. Went away for college and studied architecture in Burbank, California. Since then, I've been practicing interior architecture and then more recently building envelopes, so more on the technical side, so like waterproofing and fenestration kind of stuff, so, yes.
Welcome.
Have a seat. Have a seat.
Before we begin, though, I'm sure some of the family would like to take a picture or something. Can we just get that out of the way? Are we going to wait? Yeah, because you don't want to wait through the whole meeting. Why don't you come sit down? Don't go far. And then why don't the family come up and get a picture? Yeah. Yeah. Okay, wait.
A pleasure.
Okay, now, wait, 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 wait. Is family taking pictures? You can't do both. Let us help you take pictures, and you guys come up and take a picture. Yeah? Let me move my... How do you want to do this?
Well, do they want a picture of one of the ladies?
Do you want one with all of us, and then you guys come up and take a picture with her? Okay, let's do it parts. Scoot over.
No, if I actually stand up, you guys stand behind. I'll say that I'm tall.
Yeah, okay, here. Want to come with us?
Yeah.
Here we go. Okay, there we go. Let me... Are you good? Yeah, come.
There we go.
You ready? Let me put my phone away.
Yes.
Why did you ask Mayor?
Yeah, jump in.
Come on, Justin.
I feel like it's the paparazzi. Okay, so why don't we, yeah, why don't we get out of the way and take a seat? Everybody come sit down. Family? Give us your phones.
Dylan Hudson. Hurry, hurry. You're too sad. Dylan Hudson.
Yeah, do you want me to take them? Yeah. How about you? Want to take this? Okay, here we go. Hudson, everybody.
Hudson. Hudson, Dylan, Dylan, Hudson.
Don't go past that, because if not, everybody will be this big. Right from there? No, no, nope. You guys jump up, jump over the top. Oh, that's good. That is awesome. You guys ready? Want to take a few? If you can't see me, I can't see you. Okay, and you should go up there, too.
Someone's hiding.
Ready? Okay, hold on a second. There we go. Wait a second. Let me get... Oh, there we go. Ooh. Okay, ready? Hold on. Okay, everybody, say happy cheers. Cheers. There we go. Wow. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. You have yours. You're well for them. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you so much. Good to see you. Good to see you. Were you going to wait? It won't be too long. It won't be too long. Just one. It's going to be not too long. One more with her boys? Sure. Dylan, I tell you. Take a picture, silly. Wait, wait, wait. Oh, that's so nice. You need that. Okay. You guys are so proud of your mommy?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
What kind of looking guys?
Oh, dang.
How old are they?
Twelve and eleven.
Okay, here we go.
The twelve are ten, thirteen next month.
Oh, you poor person.
Yes.
Teenagers.
We'd like to thank everybody for their patience, so we're going to just start rocking and rolling, because it's probably bedtime soon for a couple gentlemen, but...
Me, yeah.
Okay. And so let's move right into roll call, please.
Pacheco.
Here.
Satori.
Here.
Crump.
Here.
Vilanueva.
Here.
Proanu.
Here.
Very good, thank you so much. And so the minutes, we'd like to ask for approval of the minutes of August 6 and of September 3, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's moved. So we're here today regarding, today's a public hearing, and we're moving forward for discussion on use permit UPR 7-19-14126 and design review DR 7-19-14127. The applicant, Simon Lynn, how you doing? Proposes to reestablish a drive-through restaurant Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen at 362 East Market Street. The proposed restaurant would be contained within the same building footprint as the previous restaurant on the site, although minor modifications to the building footprint as the previous restaurant on the site, although minor modifications to the building interior and exterior are proposed. The existing site plan, including onsite traffic flow and drive-through location, would be unchanged. The project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15301 Existing Facilities APN 006-493-190. Now, before I move forward, many of you know I live right up the street from the location, and so because of that, I need to recuse myself, so I'm going to go sit out there with you all, and I'm going to pass... I'll be back. I'll pass on to the vice chair, and thank you very much. Do you want to sit here?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I just would like to implore all those families who would like to remain so you can watch the proceeding here. This will be real quick. I presume. Good evening. Tonight, we are going to subject this to approval, but let me give you a brief piece of this just before. This place is now the so-called Steak and Shake, but probably some of the pundits would say this is too classy and too expensive. Actually, it's that. So the owner, previous owner of this really went, I would say, they lost in this journey to a restaurant. But now, hopefully, that we can restore the economic activity in that area, and really, we need this badly for Daly City. So with this, I would like to call on the planning staff to... By the way, thank you very much for the planning department for really encouraging the business headhunters to really to settle here in Daly City. Thank you very much for you. I would like to call on Brian Pallan, Assistant Planner, to discuss this with us. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. The item before you this evening is the use permit and design review for Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen Drive-Thru Restaurant at 362 East Market Street. The project is located at the southeast corner of East Market Street and Third Avenue with a driveway extending to Hillside Boulevard. The proposed Popeyes will operate at the site of the previously approved Steak and Shake. A new use permit is required because a period of more than six months has lapsed from the cessation of the previous drive-through use. The design review is required for the proposed facade improvements. The layout of the drive-through and onsite circulation and parking would remain unchanged. The restaurant would provide seating capacity for 71 people, a drive-through queuing lane that could accommodate up to eight cars, 24 regular parking spaces, and three ADA accessible The site plan remains unchanged from the previous approval. The floor plan also remains essentially the same, other than rebranding and color changes. The facade remodel includes a change to a more traditional design. The articulated roof lines and projecting awnings will be replaced with a flat roof line and stucco walls with decorative shutter elements. The ledge stone at the base of the building would be replaced with river rock. The design theme continues onto the south and east elevations. Here's a photo of the existing site viewed from East Market at Third Avenue. The facade remodel includes a change to standing seam awnings, stucco siding, decorative shutter elements, and a river rock base. Drive-through restaurants are allowed in the PD 20 zoning district with the approval of a use permit. A use permit is required because more than six months has lapsed since the cessation of the previous drive-through use. An updated queuing analysis for the drive-through was performed by Hexgon Traffic Consultants. Staff recommends the planning commission forward to the city council the following: Adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report, affirm the environmental assessment, and approve use permit UPR 71914126 and design review DR 71914127, subject to the findings and conditions outlined herein. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
I do, Brian.
Anybody who wants to speak with regards to this, we are going to have a public forum for this, so if you want to speak on this, you can get the speaker card, anybody. So we are going to allow you to speak, port on behalf of this project. So let's go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah. Brian, are those hours of operation the same as they were for Steak and Shake?
They are remaining, and it's within the conditions of approval, and I can verify what the hours are for you.
Well, you know, you just showed them, yeah.
Yeah, and it's also, it's also outlined in the PD 20 zoning district.
Thank you.
Anybody who wants to ask question?
No.
I guess I have a question about the traffic flow. So given that it's Popeyes, and they have like special days like on Tuesday, and it's from other restaurants, it seems that they have heavy traffic. How are you accommodating? How will they be accommodating the extra heavy traffic on those special days?
So there is a condition of approval that says if the queuing line ends up extending beyond the eight-car area that they provided, that they take measures whether they have an employee out there taking orders from the car rather than using the electronic. But in order to expedite it through, there's a condition that requires that they take mitigation measures in the case of an overflow.
Okay. And then I just actually drove by there, and so from what I understand, it's open until midnight, correct? So as for the residents that are along that street facing the restaurant, is the lighting going to be dimmed at a certain hour?
The condition states that the lighting must project downward onto the project site rather than any overflow lighting, but it doesn't specify a certain hour that it can be brighter versus dimmer.
Okay.
For the information of the Commissioner of Daly City, we have here the background at the same time use permit parking circulation in Steak and Shake, but probably because you were not provided with this, including the so-called queuing analysis determination, how many 11?
Yeah.
It is incorporated in this study.
Yeah, and if the staff could add, essentially, what the neighbors across the street would probably impact them the most, actually, is the signs on the building. Normally, signs are backlit, meaning that the light shines directly from the sign. We've required as a condition of approval that any signs that are placed on the building be halo illuminated if they're facing residents. And there was also a vehicle queuing analysis prepared for Popeyes specifically that was different from the one prepared for Steak and Shake, and it analyzed Popeyes restaurants in the Bay Area, and it was determined through the observation conducted in that analysis that the maximum vehicle queue length was 11 vehicles, and those could be all accommodated on the site, and they wouldn't spill into the street. And that's the maximum that was observed at, I believe, stores in Newark and Dublin, I believe.
Yeah, Newark and Dublin.
In fact, the analysis here is the peak period is between 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Right.
That's how it goes.
And one other note regarding the lights in the parking lot. What has been required and was required for Steak and Shake were the LED style, that that light doesn't disperse the same way incandescent does. It's more localized. I know when across from the condo project next to where I live, when they redid their parking lot at Saramati, and they went to the LEDs, it made a vast impact on the people across the street. It was a lot darker at night.
Okay.
I would like to ask also a few questions here regarding the architectural changes to the exterior building. How it will be done? Architectural.
I didn't hear what your question was after that. I'm sorry.
The architectural changes, what will be the... Because what we have now is the Steak and Shake.
Yeah, if you take a look at... Can I back up to the photo? Probably the best slide to show that. So here, if you see the Steak and Shake, it has the sloping roof line, and then they have their kind of angled projections where they have the signage. So the biggest change there is they're going to a more traditional flat roof line, and then the monument element that had the signage before is also at the top of that is going to be flat rather than at an angle. Additionally, the exterior siding is going to be stucco. I believe right now they have the murals painted on the side. They're changing out the murals for a stucco, and then windows with a shutter element. I think it's a false shutter, but made to look like more traditional styling that has windows with shutters. And then as the stone veneer along the base of the building, they're switching to a river rock, whereas the existing has more of a kind of a polished, flat type of stone veneer base.
Okay. Yeah, to be honest with you, I love the architectural design of Steak and Shake, especially in the evening. It's beautiful. It's very classy, really. And I hope the future owner of this can maintain the elegance of that kind of structure. That's my only observation, Your Honor. Now, any other question?
No.
Before we open this to a public hearing? Anybody wants to talk?
Yeah.
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Hello, everybody. There you go.
Okay, I'm giving you all the latitude to speak.
Thank you so much. As I mentioned, I actually live right up the street that way, and it's an interesting view. They must have a wide angle, because there's houses right across the street, and there's apartments here. But the reason I decided to come up is ask just a couple questions, and number one is I'm trying to understand, I can't remember when Steak and Shake started, did we have a different time span from 6:00 a.m. to midnight? Because I feel that 6:00 a.m. to midnight, and as you know, when people are going through the drive-through or such, and they're talking, the residents right across the street, their houses are right there, and I don't recall it being open from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 when Steak and Shake was there. Do you guys have any information on that? And that would be my biggest concern is time, and I appreciate as a resident of the neighborhood that, you know, we're not going to have cars all the way up the street, and that's it. My main concern is the time, and I think it's... And I didn't know Popeyes, is 6:00 a.m. when they open the doors to start cooking? Or are they going to serve breakfast? Those are the... And... Or is it just they're going to get there at 6:00 o'clock, they start at 11:00 or 10:00, and then they close because they have to clean and stuff at 12:00? But the stores, I'd like to know what the store hours are, and that's it. Thank you. Good job.
Would you like to answer that?
So I'm going, I'm going to ask the applicant, who I believe is here.
Can the applicant, Mr. Jolink, come forward? Yeah, just to amplify to us whatever is the concern here of the neighbors.
The store...
Can you introduce first yourself?
I'm sorry?
Can you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. I am Simon Lynn, and I'm the architect for...
Oh, you're the architect, and he's the owner?
Yeah.
Welcome. He can come forward if he wants.
So the hours are 10:00 to 10:00, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
My name is Joe Chen, I'm the owner. Sorry, I got a cold. But the thing is that basically our worker go in there at 9:00, and then we open at 10:00, and then we close at 10:00, and then they basically finish cleanup by 11:00. That's the... All our stores like that, so...
Is that clear?
Yes.
That's clear, yeah. Thank you.
So that's it, he's the owner. Anybody else who wants to talk? Hearing, I don't see anybody. So we're going to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we're going to close the public hearing. Now, recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council following the recommendation.
Kelly, we need to vote.
Adapt the findings as outlined herein. Do you have any question?
Yeah, we need to vote on closing the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We just...
No.
We did it. We did it.
I thought we did also.
It was moved.
Moved and seconded.
Yeah, moved and seconded, yeah.
All those in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
We moved and seconded that we close public hearing. Now, we recommend that the planning commission forward to the city council, the following recommendation. Adapt the findings as herein outlined. Any motion?
Make a motion.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we are close.
Seconds.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Recommend that the city council affirm the environmental assessment, and recommend that the city council approve use permit UPR 7-19-14126 and design review DR 7-19-14127, subject to the findings and conditions outlined here. Roll call, please.
So moved.
Aye.
Aye.
I second.
I second.
Aye. Or seconded.
I seconded.
I seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we.
Okay. Pacheco?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes.
Crump?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
It's been, so we have this now approved.
Yes.
Approved. So anything else that you would like to, would like to say something before you go?
No, I think I'm done.
Just the beginning. This is a normally, this is a special meeting.
Oh, I have to come back?
Yeah.
Can I come back?
Okay, Madam Chairman, come.
Before you close, Madam Chair, may I speak on public comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I don't get to come to planning commission very often, but I do want to say thank you to the commissioners here that have given their time, and also the staff members around an important commission in our city in ensuring that, you know, there is a thriving economic development opportunity for the city of Daly City, but also ensuring it's the right fit for our community. So I want to say thank you to Commissioner Pacheco, Commissioner Satori, Vice Chair Satori, Madam Chair Prognio, and Commissioner Crump, and to the newest addition, Commissioner Villanueva. Thank you for your service. We know that, you know, it's not paid, it's volunteer, but we are thankful, and I just want to say thank you very much for the service and all you do.
Thank you.
Actually, Madam Chairman, on December 6, we're going to have an appreciation party for all the commissioners, just to honor all of you and all of us.
Nice.
Including you, every guy. So on December 6, at Joseph Wesley.
Nice, very nice.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
And I would like to thank Vice Chair Commissioner Satori for doing such an excellent job.
Not yet.
And, but just to say, it's an honor. I know for each and one of us, and we welcome you to, we've been waiting for you.
Oh, really?
So it's nice that you're here, and we welcome you, and nice to see your family and friends. And what do you think, huh? Good? So with that, I'd like to, if there's nothing else, we'd like to adjourn the meeting. And I don't have to vote again, do I?
Anybody wants to talk?
No one else needed to speak? No. Okay, so we adjourn the meeting. Thank you, thank you, everybody, for coming. And goodbye to everybody. Take care. Bye-bye.